All right, we're going to call to order the Glades County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for Monday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. We'll have a prayer by Commissioner Taylor and a pledge by Commissioner Patterson. Everybody please rise.
Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity and the privilege and the freedom to gather here this evening. We want to pray for this meeting, Lord, that you would give us wisdom and discernment, that you would help us to make decisions that benefits our county and just lead us and guide us, Lord, be with our, our country today as the things that's unsettling that we're going through. We thank you that we confess in you. We thank you for protection and for peace and, Lord, be with each one here and their families represented in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody here. Let's see, Minister of Health, do you need to remove number seven?
Yes, please.
I get a motion to remove Business Agenda Number Seven.
So move.
Very. Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner South to remove Item Number Seven. Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Noes. All right, public input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide a public comment, please slot a comment card at the entrance to the Commission Chambers. Please note, all comments on the non-agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the Board's discretion. Do we have any public comments? None. We will move on to presentations and award. Number one is presentation of the annual audit of Glades County for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good evening. Zach Shalafore, partner of James Moore Company. We did pass out the bound copies of the full audit, including the board, county law, as well as each of the constitutional officers. In there in the very front was a little printout, a powerpoint presentation. If you like that, we'll have you to use for my comments this evening. As of last year, I'll give you kind of a thirty thousand foot view. More than happy to drill in anywhere further, answer any questions, and I'll act this up. Do you want to start out just by thanking the board for the opportunity to work with the county? This is our second year serving as the Glades County External Auditors. I also have to say a big thanks to the ability to your entire team. Of course, we worked most with the Post Office. Tasha does an outstanding job, you know, within that scope of work, and all the other constitutionals as well, you know, our auditing for being only two years into the working relationship. Normally, year one is just kind of figure out what's going on. Year two is like, okay, we have a little bit of feel for how you guys knew things and just in general in two short years in kind of the audit world. Our team raised about everyone they could work with, so really I see that as just kind of a testament to, you know, much as the Post Office, to every other constitutional team that you all have down here. So normally I like to kind of stick to the script and say, the audit's the audit. We didn't feel it was important to share that just based off of all the feedback I get where, you know, our team's like, hey, we wish all of the fourteen counties that we audit and all the cities and everybody else, we wish everybody was like Glades County. So I did want to say a quick thanks to everyone from that perspective. So in the, in the report themselves, I'll focus at the board level primarily. So there are five reports that we issue. These will be the same reports as you saw in the audit last year. The first report's the audit report on the financial statements. And what this gets at is the primary focus of a financial statement audit is to express an opinion on your financial statements to effectively say, can these numbers be relied upon? We did issue an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion we can issue, saying that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. The second area of focus, as in most years, you're over either the state and/or federal threshold for what we call a single audit. And what that is, when you're over that threshold, we have to perform effectively a mini compliance audit over what we call your major grant programs. This year, you are over the threshold from the state side. We did look at a couple of grants related to some D E P funding as well as law enforcement salary assistance. Again, that's solely focused on compliance. I've had a clean opinion there in terms of no findings of non-compliance or concerns noted with regard to the internal controls to help ensure compliance. We're not just saying, were you compliant, but do we feel that you had good controls in place to help ensure that you are always in compliance? So no issues on that report. The third one is on internal control and financial reporting. While this is a financial statement audit and not an internal control audit, there are separate engagements to express an opinion on internal controls. If we come across any deficiencies in internal controls as it relates to pulling the numbers together, for instance, if there's major assistance needed where staff can't get the numbers to a spot, that basically flows into these financial statements, as well as if we look at your major processes related to financial reporting, or the two big ones, being your payable process as well as just your accounts payable, cash disbursement process. If we come across any deficiencies in the design of those controls, or as we perform our testing, we say, hey, this process wasn't followed properly in some of that testing, those are the types of things that lies to a comment here. Were no such findings in that report. The last two are kind of a catch-all of items required by the Florida Audit General, kind of the way they update their guidance every year to ensure that if state statutes, any changes there are being met by virtue of additional items I'll throw into this report. Most are focused on financial condition. If there were any major requirements that the county triggered, we would effectively have to notify the state as we'll get into the county's in a strong financial position, so no concerns to that effect. And then there's also a catch-all for just any other comments, recommendations that we come across or things that we need to just communicate. One item that we had here relates to your building department activity where that permitting revenue can only be used for the administration of the Florida Building Code in that department. There's carryforward limitation related to your prior four years and not having over that. The county was a little bit over that, so we're just basically communicating that to ensure there's a plan kind of in the long run of the next few years to ensure compliance with that statute. And so that is the summary of the reports on the county side. The second page of that handout has a quick rundown of comments we would like to show quick visually of what we had across all of the different audits as we do issue a separate audit report for each of your constitutional officers. We had no findings of any of those different types throughout the others. As I said again, you know, the teams out there do a great job. They have some contracting back at the clerk's office and just really help streamline things. So overall, a very positive result from those audits as well. On the bottom there, I always take a quick look at your history in the general fund. This, of course, being your primary operating fund for the county. Your fund balance year-over-year up about a million dollars to sixteen point three million. Those different buckets relate to basically how available or spendable are those funds. Generally speaking, the bulk of that trickles down to what we call your assigned, which says it's earmarked for a purpose, as well as your unassigned fund balance. So I'll hit that on the next slide. And then that restricted number is fairly low, just inherently based on the fact that most of your restricted dollars where you've got strings attached on the external funding, those are inherently tracked in special revenue funds. Really just have the accountability and transparency over the use of those dollars from the start. So the general fund is really your, of course, primary, just unrestricted operating fund. So we look at the assigned plus the unassigned on the next page. What I always like to do is just compare that to what did we spend in the current fiscal year to kind of say as a percent about how many months in reserves are there. There's a recommendation out there in government finance that no less than two months. With that comes different reasons to be higher. So the two big ones I see relevant for the county is if you're generally a smaller government, you know, a percentage only goes so far in terms of dollars, plus being susceptible to hurricanes and natural disasters. So there's a reason to say, hey, let's be to some degree higher. So when you're a smaller government, I always tend to focus on what's the dollar amount that we have relative to, you know, future upcoming capital or other needs and just kind of overall contingencies for hurricanes or otherwise. Overall, about a fourteen million dollar unrestricted reserve and as a percentage up about four percent from the prior year, but overall a very healthy level of reserves. And on the bottom there, look at your solid waste fund, we call your unrestricted net position, kind of a very similar just bottom line reserves in that fund. How are we doing year over year? This can fluctuate a little bit. Really what we look for here is, you know, are there any sustained decreases? I might say, hey, are these rates not where they should be or something like that? Overall, that's been pretty consistent in the recent years and no red flags or other concerns marked respect within that fund. And then lastly, your other gov-- excuse me, other governmental funds. The numbers there, I think, carried forward from a, we changed out our template in the current year, but your other governmental funds, again, those special revenue funds with restricted dollars, about a sixteen million dollar increase. So no, we had found, you know, thirty something million dollars. I was just typing on there. I wish I could say we found all that money, but we did not. About a million dollar increase overall, again, no funds with a negative deficit fund balance that would have to be, you know, supported by the general fund or something in the long run, so no concerns there. We do spend a lot of our time testing within those funds to say, okay, if there was restrictions that applied to those dollars, were those funds spent in accordance with, you know, the law, the grant rules, whatever the case might be? And we had no issues that we came across with regard to those funds being spent appropriately. And then lastly, I'll hit on this every year, pretty much the final item, is we do report what's called a net pension liability. The county's shown this in your financial statements for about ten years now. This year, about fourteen point seven million dollars. Those are to highlight the fact that while you see this number in your financial statements, it's really more of a theoretical number related to your kind of allocated share from the state. But the key is, you know, you will not have to cut a check for fourteen million dollars, the obligation to N F R S. That's met every month when every constitutional officer on the board make your required contribution based on your payroll for that month. Always like to highlight that fact, all the required contributions were made and that number, while it is big, is really there just for theoretical purposes to comply with accounting standards. So with that, those are the highlights. I thank them again for the chance to be here and I'm more than glad to answer the questions.
I kind of read as much as I could reading last night. I was looking at solid base and it, it basically, from what I could read in the report, is we're not, we're losing money as far as operations and what we're taking in and what we're spending out, but we're, we're gaining money, but I think it's due interest on the money that we have in reserves for shutting it down, but I don't know if we want to look at that for the future or changing our rates out there. So if I may?
We need to look at those rates because this money also has to maintain that closure. So that actual closure, we've got our expenses related to our F one, removal and testing. So there's expenses. We may be gaining money with, with interest, but we're also losing money on our transfer fees. So we do need to look at it that, that way.
But greatly for Laura Reed. Do they have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you for sharing the positive comments.
And thanks for the great report. We just got to fix one little item.
All right.
And that may be because we were short on staff a lot this year too, but I don't know. I mean, that's why we had much reserves in the building part of it. But, got it? Public hearings, we have none. Our consent agenda is nothing but the county warrants. Oh, wait a minute, we need to make much of the acceptance of the report. They're just, um.
I don't think you have to make them all to be accepted, but if you want to, you want them all.
Yeah, let's back up and do that.
Mr. Chairman, to approve the comprehensive annual financial report, findings, recommendations, and management responses into record for the fiscal year ended section thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Sir. And motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner South to approve the, you know, financial report. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Noes. Pass this five vote. All right, now we have the public hearings and we'll move consent agenda, which is number two, county warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move with the county warrants, consent agenda.
Say.
Motion by Commissioner South, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Noes. Pass this five vote. Public input on business agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide a public comment on agenda items, please slot a comment card on the table at the entrance to the Commission Chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the Board's discretion. Do we have any, any comment card on business agenda items? All right, we'll move to the business agenda, which is number three. Request for concurrence on the appointment of Brian Proant as the administrator of the Florida Department of Health in Glades County.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the former person had moved on and the Health Department had went out and did a search, myself, Jennifer Davis, and were part of the interview process. We interviewed, I think it was four, really the final, four of the final candidates. I think we all unanimously selected Mr. Proant for recommending him to move further in the process. I believe they've taken the right move here and requested we concur with their findings of making Brian Proant the next director. So we'd ask you to approve the concurrent approval of Brian to move on to be the administrator for the Department of Health in Glades County.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appointment of Brian Proant as the administrator of the Department of Health in Glades County.
And motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. I will say, Brian Proant's been there for a long, long time. I think he should know the department very well. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Noes. Pass this five vote. Number four is request to exercise the extension on the auditing services contract with James Moore.
After all the good things he said?
Good evening. Tasha Morgan, Finance Director. This is a request to get permission from the board to move forward with the extension of the contract we currently have with James Moore. We're bringing it to you now because if you opted to not extend the contract, we would be required to go back out for RFP, per reports that we've. So just a brief history for the members that are newer. In December of two thousand and twenty-two, we did issue an RFP for audit services. We had a couple of bidders on that, on that RFP, and the board did move forward with awarding the contract to James Moore. We have a three-year contract. The initial contract was a three-year contract, and it did provide an opportunity to extend that contract for two additional years. So they have completed the second year of that contract. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five audit will be the third year of that contract, and we're requesting that the board move forward with the extension of the contract for the two additional years. The rates were established in the RFP process and during the contract process. So based on what had previously been provided in the contract, the fiscal year twenty-six rate would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and the fiscal year twenty-seven rate would be one sixty. So we do not have an extension at this time. This is just a request to move forward with an extension, and then we would work with James Moore and the county attorney to get an extension, which would come back to support the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the extension of the auditing services contract with James Moore to authorize staff and county attorney to move forward with developing and renewing to the contract and authorize the chairman to sign.
Say.
And motion by Commissioner South, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Noes. Pass this five vote. All right, number five, appointment of representative to the small county coalition.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Chris Newman moves over the small county coalition and it reached out. He was, he wasn't aware that there had been a change for Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Patterson to remove Commissioner Taylor and yourself from the board. This is an important timeframe, and he, he requested that if we could put Commissioner Stanley back on the board to, to serve as one of the liaisons from Glades County to the, the, the small county coalition. We'd ask that the county consider that. I spoke with Commissioner Barnes and we basically agreed that if something the board wanted to do, he would, he would agree with that.
When we, when we did the thing, I didn't really realize that they were, they were going to want me to be on the board, executive board, so if you guys don't mind, I would love to accept it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appointment of Commissioner Stanley as representative for the small county coalition to replace Commissioner Moore.
And motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Noes. Pass this five. All right, number six, request approval, oh, thank you. Number six is a request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty-seven, corresponding resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, increasing the general fund. Lakeport fired Department Budget by thirty-five sixty for the replacement of overhead door damage on the lines.
Tasha Morgan, Finance Director. At the heading red, there was damage to overhead doors at the station. The county has received insurance money for that damage, and this budget amendment is then budgeting the revenue and corresponding expenditure for the replacement of those doors. It does come with a resolution because it will be increasing the budget from by three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, I'm going to read the five of the resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, Glades County, Florida. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, enter for Glades County, Florida authorizing amendment to the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Glades County General Fund budget.
Mr. Chairman, to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty-seven, corresponding resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Say.
And motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Any discussion? Do a roll call book. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. South?
Yes.
And South is yes. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, that was a pretty quick, constitutional, to, to, um, county, you have anything? Don't see any other constitutional. Out of the grounds, not here.
I have just a couple of quick updates. Seven twenty-one project moving forward. They're starting doing the complete reconstruction section just north of the canal, Indian Berry Canal. So that's moving forward. Seventy-four, we finally got an answer back from DOT on the change of the design for, for seventy-four. So their intended start date is August fourth, but we're going to get the better product, the better design. Working on that grant or that, the grant for the voting improvement on the twenty-sixth. We have a meeting with F W C for the Indian Berry Canal program, so hopefully we can get some funding out of that. That would be, be great. And we had a meeting today, Bailey and I, with this group that got some grant to give tablets to underserved, low-income families and people. So we're going to be rolling that out here soon, so stay tuned. I, I was pretty amazed at what they're going to do. So there's elderly people, the people who get the meals up in Buckhead or here in Morave, and they'll be, if they meet the income requirements, there's training that goes with it, and it's a free iPad to them. It has the, I said, it doesn't come with a card, does it? We will have broadband everywhere. It comes with the card, five G, four LTE cards in them, and for you to receive free meals. It's a broad spectrum of people within Glades County who are rewarded this, through this organization to, so we're going to start having meetings that, we're going to, we're going to brainstorm with them to how we get the flyers out and get the information out at the library and different places, and we bring this thing together, but it's pretty, I think it's a pretty, pretty good deal for, for the counties. So.
Is there a limit on how many we're getting, or is anybody that applies gets them all?
So I, I didn't get a list of all the counties. There's twelve thousand that are available, but I don't know how many counties there are, because I have to go through an application process, much like our SHIP program. They're going to have to prove their low income, and they're going to have to prove those types of things to get it. And of course, the training comes with it, and there's training tutorials on the tablet, so I think it's a great thing and it's part of this communication technology process. And our grant that I told you about, that we were doing for the four counties, DeSoto, Henry, us, what was the other county then?
The Chilwell, DeSoto.
Yes, for the intersection monitoring. We're finishing up that paperwork and getting that sent in and try to get that grant so we can monitor these intersections that DOT says there's no problem with. We can have real-time, real-life data. And I was talking to Mary Beth at the R P C meeting about it, so hopefully that will come through. Not the most important, but important is Commissioner South gave me the information for the gentleman wants to put a modular post office up in Palmdale, and so we talked about maybe putting it at the community center area. I'm going to look and see, I got to find out what the requirements are, but they want to plug and play, drop in post office. So thank you Commissioner South for getting that done, and we'll see if we can make, make that come back, come to fruition.
Thank you. That's all you got?
That's all I got.
All right, anybody got anything for county?
I, I've got a couple of questions that were asked of me today. One of them has, has come in. The seven twenty-one network being down there, do we control the speed limit on that road or is that controlled by the tribe?
Controlled by us.
Just controlled by us. I've had someone ask if we could look at bringing it back up to forty-five again. We dropped it down to forty. I remember when Mr. Commissioner Wooden was on board because road was in really bad shape.
I would like to coordinate with the tribe because they, the tribe put in several pedestrian bus stops in there for the bus stops. I know it's hard to do forty-three there, especially since that new pavement and such, and that's one of the challenges, but I would definitely have to, I would like to coordinate with the tribe because I don't, I don't want to just change just because.
Right. Well, maybe the section that's not in the tribe too.
Well, that's already up. That section outside the tribe goes from forty-five to fifty-five.
Okay. Well, I know there for a while, the road was running down. We put that whole section running there down to forty.
I've looked at the plan design. I think it changes back when you, you know, we're reconstructing a big section of that, demucking it and reconstructing a big section of that, so we can look at that. Because especially that section, there's nothing out there but cane and cattle.
Cane and cattle. The farmer's in a herd. Anything else for the county manager?
Move on to department heads. Mr. Duchon, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Susan Duchon, through the record. And what I have provided to you this evening is an update based upon the six priorities that you had have been mentioned as far as code enforcement issues that you need to knock out as best we can. And so I provided that update, and I have with me, the CP is Jetson Delaney. He's our billing official. And then I also have Darren Lopez, and he's the code enforcement officer. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have. We did add Seventh Street onto this, and it was on the list of our, but it's on here, sir.
You should have got a complaint this morning on Lime Street. I guess there's a roof falling in up there somewhere, but I don't think they called you about it.
No, not on that, no, sir. So we're here to answer any questions you may have, the code enforcement process, what they, what they found. We gave a brief summary table. So, um, we're here to answer any questions you may have, the code enforcement process, um, what they, what they found, we gave a, a brief summary table.
So, you are, you are with the county now, or are you still a contractor?
Um, well, I'm still with the county, but I don't work directly for the county.
Okay, I thought maybe we had hired a, a code enforcement.
I'm your building official, and this is Darian.
Okay, alright, yeah, yeah, but you're both contract employees right now.
We're both with the same county.
Well. I see most of these are going to court, and I just. But I mean, just like the guy up there on Seventh Street, he's been to court, they're fine, and they're still gonna bring him back again.
A little more time to see what the judge.
I know he was cleaning the place up, but he's spelt with a bit of that.
Yes, yes. And I think I looked back into it, it was, I think it was a previous one, actually, before the last one, so it's maybe like a car.
So he filed under the repeated thing, and I know that they had brought a motorhome in there for him to live in, and I think he's been told to move that out too, that was.
Yes, he's been told to move that, yeah. A garbage, trash, so.
Any questions for that, are they here or not?
Yeah, and, and, and I appreciate this, Louis.
I do.
Um, and I'd like to see, I mean, nobody likes to see it, but I'm glad to see that we have taken the initiative and went and dropped the, uh, court date and everything up where we can start moving forward, because this has been going on for quite some time, I mean, quite some time. Just the, the one that I was telling you about on my road, they just put another RV in. Okay, now y'all have already been by there and given a ticket, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, then they just did nothing, so.
That's a violation.
Right, so, um, but the thing of it is, and, and I know it's been said before, that, well, unless somebody makes a complaint, you know, we can't act anonymously, and I understand all that, but. The way that I read court statute is you can file your own complaint, whoever.
Correct.
Okay, if you see something that looks out of place, so when you're coming in from, I'm gonna say in West Palm, right, do you live in West Palm?
Uh, I come from down south, but.
You come from down south, so you're coming up twenty-seven, you know, and driving around twenty-seven and everything else, and then all of a sudden you see a guy start piling up a bunch of junk in the middle of nowhere, I mean, we, it should've never had to come to this, is what I'm saying, and I know you're, I know you are, but, you know, we should've been seeing this. When you're driving down seventy-eight, I just had a fellow call me, uh, coming in, right there at the corner of Coffee Road, where the guy put the little illegal bridge, he's just stacking a bunch of junk back in there. You know, people want to live in a decent place and not have rats and snakes and weeds and everything all around their neighbors, and, you know, the, the place that I was speaking of, over on Latten Trail. Let's take aside the fact that there's, you know, four RVs in there, let's just look at the fact that there's people living in four RVs that have no electricity, no water, no set deck, no nothing else. And there's people living there. You know, that, then it becomes a problem, then it becomes a health hazard, then it becomes kinda like what you're dealing with over on Seventh Street. You know, there, there, you drive around the county. I guarantee you, you could drive up and down just the main thoroughfares in the county and, and find a lot of stuff that's been neglected for a long, long, long time. And people don't like calling down on their neighbors, they don't, because that, that causes them, but we should be more diligent and say, hey, you know, this is out of hand.
We've been more reactive as far as code enforcement, reactive is pretty much you rely on complaints coming in.
Understand.
So, we're gonna move to more proactive.
Yes, sir.
Be code enforcement officers out patrolling.
Yes, sir.
Every day's week, weekends, so, we're gonna move to that.
Yeah, and that, I think that would help tremendously, especially, I, I know it's just written here, like you're gonna give them a warning, you're not, senior. So if you're right through a neighborhood and you see the guy's grass is three feet tall, and you go knock on the door and say, hey, I'm just giving you a warning right now, because the, next time I come, it's gonna be a violation, and maybe they're cleaning it up, I mean, we're not here to, to punish the people, we just want them to follow the law.
Yes, I would.
And whatever we gotta do.
Come to compliance, because it creates, when they don't, then we gotta go to citation, it creates a whole mountain of work, and I'd rather them to just come to compliance.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of times, you know, especially in Glades County, we have, we have a lot of elderly people here, you see, you know, you're driving through a neighborhood and, um, Francis, I'm, I'm in Glades for a lot of the time, you know, it's real. You're driving through a neighborhood and, and it's the same place, and you're like, damn, the grass is getting off the top, maybe I should just check on Miss Smith, see what's going on, is she alright, or, you know, and, and that may be a second race for some of these people, hey, you know, answer the door, they might have a, they're gonna broke the leg or something, you don't ever know, but it's just, it gets, it gets bad.
Yeah, it's, you know, ordinance, it, it calls for it, but, um, instead of a courtesy notice, it's basically notice of violation, you can't like courtesy notice, you can give up to thirty days, but we're gonna shorten that down to fourteen, fifteen days, so, and then you can have some citation, as well as citation.
And you see, you know, some of, if there's a tree growing through a house, it, it's taking longer than fourteen days to do it, so.
And, um, I brought it to, um, Mr. Carlisle, maybe adopting the property maintenance code, which would give a, give a more defined, more specific code to write up for the woodworks. Um, say the lapday buildings, then you paint, it gives a height for the grass, you know, you can put that in, you know, because sort of, or, ordinance is right now are very, um, broad, you, you have to kinda search to find something that would cover.
Tree line.
Like the tree, yeah, so I put in the property maintenance code, it covers everything, covers unsafe buildings, um, so, may I can give you a copy of it, and have the commissioner, you know, look at, it's not a huge book, but we can adopt that, that would be useful. I guess key guidelines and.
You work for a lot of other places doing this, I mean, do other county, cities, towns have a property maintenance, uh, or is it something that's just kinda coming on new, or, we don't want to turn into an HOA where if your grass is an inch and a half tall on Wednesday, we're gonna throw you in jail, but, you know.
That would happen in two days, so.
Well, right, I mean, but you don't, you also don't wanna wake up one morning and have two containers fully used tires rotting down.
Correct, I mean, it's always an option, though, to, you know, we can give up to thirty days in, in the ordinance now.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, say a building needs to be repainted or something like that, and then you can just make a, basically courtesy notice, that's violation, give it thirty days, and then as well, you're worried that they have time, but if they're making a good faith effort, they always extend.
Sure.
I'm not out to buy everybody, so.
I really understand, we just, you know, I, it, if you get into, you know, and, and I do sit on the economic development board and everything else, but if you put yourself in a perspective of, if I was in business trying to come into the counties, you know, and the first thing you see pulling up through, through twenty-seven, or when you're coming up through Chevy on seventy-eight, you know, for a long time it was colossal, it's kinda started to clean up a little bit, but. You don't wanna invest a whole lot of money into a place like that, so.
We don't wanna overregulate.
No, you don't, no, totally agree, but, so I, I asked you this, if, so you, these cases go to court and, um, for the second time probably, so, and he, so the judge says, well, I had you ten dollars, now I do twenty, are you just gonna, do, do we just let it ride there, or do we go back and take him then a third time, or, or? Because I think some of these violations that we've got, they've been fined ten dollars, and then they never go back to court again, and this road office closed, he's getting fined ten dollars a day, but the place is still dilapidated and fallen down, and that's where, I mean, that's where we as a county need to fix our code, so that, there's gotta be some way to stop that.
I believe the one on Seventh is under, is Judy Cade, right, I think he's under like fifteen dollars a day, I don't know how many years it's been, he's already.
Yeah.
So, ordinance reads, you know, go to citation, and then don't do anything, I would say nuisance abatement.
So the challenge you have, and that is the challenge with code enforcement, because you have property rights, so you can't just go in there, even though they've been proven to be wrong, you can't go in there and just take your property, you can't just go in there and say, okay, you can't do this anymore, we're gonna, we're gonna barricade your driveway off, so you can't bring any more tubs in there, that's our challenge, and because property rights are still property rights, and they still own that property, no matter how bad we don't like it. So the nuisance abatement gives us an opportunity to go clean it up, if they go to the nuisance abatement board, then we're on the hook for cleaning it up, and then we're on the hook for the money, and then you'll leave the property, and if it's not homesteaded, then you foreclose, so. Uh, but it's not an easy process, it's not a slow process, it's not gonna get cleaned up on the fifteenth of July after he goes to court, it's gonna be a mess because it's the way the law is, it's not, because we don't wanna do it, and we get to the feeling where it's like, why bother, because you, you, you get this fine, you get the citation, you get the daily fine, and I am firm, was laughing at it, saying it's cheaper for me to store my junk here and pay the daily, the fine than it is to clean it up. So then the county's gotta decide, does the county wanna go on the hook for the nuisance abatement board and have the opportunity to go in there, and we clean it up, we bid it out and have it cleaned up, and then we're on the hook for that money, so that's the next step. So I don't want anybody to think because it's fined that it's gonna get cleaned up, because you gotta go through those steps, and then you have the last hearing, which is the massive hearing where you take that last step where the fines are, are implemented, so, those, those are, those are the steps, and by law, I can't change those.
Sure.
The, um, the ones that he's talking about, I've used those, uh, property maintenance standards in other communities, and they aren't designed for more ru, uh, urban areas, uh, so much for rural areas, but it can be implemented, but then it has a lot of discretion with the code officers that they're not out there, being an HOA, you know, doing it every time something's broken.
We don't go by rocks and windows, because they're missing the windows, screaming or something.
Right, right.
But, but those, uh, those property maintenance standards, I've used them well, and then before we did our code, and I've used them in Lake Park, and I've used them in other places, and they have their place.
You know, just like, I know the house on Lime Street, I know I've taken pictures of it, it had bees in it, and I don't know who I sent them to, but the lady called me today, and now the roof's collapsing in there, and, um.
She's gotta rid the bees.
Uh?
She's gotta rid the bees.
The other neighbor, he's got tarpaulin' all down his fence now, because he don't wanna look at the place this fall in the next story, so, I mean, and I know there's another one right there, right as you come in Buckhead, it's been vacant for, it's got a blue roof on, it's been on there for probably eight, nine years, and nothing's ever been done with it up either, but. Whether it's ever, uh, the neighbors told me they turned it into code enforcement, but whether they did or not, you still have that online where you can go and see.
Yes, I'm sure.
But, um, like I say, it just never ends, and then the only other one that I really bothered to get a lot is the personal dog, and have a perfectly nice trailer, and by the time it goes through probate and sec, tax sales, it's, the whole building fell down before we ever did have, I've seen one trailer, it is immaculate, and before it got through all the channels, there was trees going out, one of those. Because nobody could do nothing, basically, but, um, I don't know if there's anything, I know we did pass something here for, when the bank takes it over, they have to maintain it, we did pass it right here, but, or we can do something about this. Anyway, we just, we've gotta figure out some way of tightening up, maybe when this magistrate comes in, that there's something different that we can do, or increase the fines, or do something to, you know, and like I say, we're not here to punish the people, we're just trying to make them comply.
And you can also adopt that property maintenance code, the whole book, or you can just adopt certain code sections out, but you can tailor it to the county, so you don't have to adopt every one of them.
Um, one other question, just real quick, because I know you're a building official, um, are we still allowed to move single life mobile homes into the county, it seems like we did something on plan at Zonal where we were maybe not doing single lives anymore a few years ago, I can't remember.
I think it was seven.
I thought we did, was that something?
Well, it's by statute.
By statute?
So statute sets a, statute sets an age limit on the mobile home, and then it also requires an engineering study that it's sound, but I don't think you can just say, we don't want single lives.
Okay.
I don't think you can do that.
So as long as it adds a, a sticker and the engineer deal and all that.
Yeah, they have a pre, um, pre-inspection application, you gotta go out, checklist, so if it's, say, a junior county or close enough, with myself or one of the inspectors, we'll go do the inspection and checklist. If it's, um, say, Dave Roward, you know, a couple hours away, will require an engineer to sign all of them, so, as a pre-inspection.
Right.
Everybody happens?
No, I'm waiting on Jeff to get through.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, I remember one problem in Palmdale, on, um, Palmdale, posted, you weren't talking about it, he put him a fence around his place. And it's a sort of kind of nice fence, but it has three openings in the front, about, I would say at least thirty foot wide, each one of them. And you, you, when you drive by from distance, you can start seeing in there, you know, that place I'm, I'm talking about, when you, you take the first street, when you're coming in Palmdale, which is fifth, and then come down there, it's on the right, and he, I wanted to know if he'd been to court, Mr. Arnold was his name. He's, he did put a fence up, front and side, I'd like to say on the front there, there's three human models openings, and he's happy as he can be to put a fence up, but it's still, you can see in there and see all that lovely yard he has, it needs to be looked into, please. And you know, if he could put a twelve foot gate, he, he needs to close that, because it's still terrible.
So it's, so it would be screened, anything in the, in the property, while the screening, you can't see it from the window, is that what?
He needs to put something, I mean, it's, it's terrible, I'll meet you out there and look, look at it, because, but then my other issue is that we're at, uh, the west side of the county off of, in the Nobles, and, uh, I know you've been there before, right, right on the right, it's a, um, the one trailer where there's yards growing up, there's all kinds of debris in the back. I can't think of the road that it runs into, but Nobles runs into it, and it's, it runs north and south, or you've been out there, uh, if I can think of the road, but that's the only other one I have that I'm concerned about.
I'll get you an update on that.
But, the one in Palmdale is not a bit better, it's trashy still, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle, thank you very much.
Sure.
What you're doing for us, I agree.
So how many days are we, are you over here? Five, so basically right now you're being driven by complaints that are coming in?
Yes, of course. But we're gonna start, like I said, patrolling.
So just as a recap, since I did here, you know. So just as a recap, since I've been here, you know, we have had code enforcement to be reactive. We had given courtesy, thirty days courtesy before an NOB, Notice of Violation, to be issued. Um, we were told not to do any code enforcement, because the site, the judge didn't like our citation, so we had to wait on Mr. Pringle to um, prepare that citation. So we tried to get people to comply just by speaking with them, and then the thirty day courtesy was removed, and we went straight to notice of violation. And so um, it's, it's just been, and then we were put on hold as far as, because we were gonna have a special magistrate. And then Mr. Karlov said, no, you need to go forward, let's go out there and take them, you know, let's go back to the judge until the special magistrate is ready to, to, to come to us. So um, and we're glad to be meeting with you and you guys giving us your thoughts in your direction. And now we wanna do, uh, be proactive in, in what we do.
So the judge is um, the new judge is kinda securities on the fourteenth, so he's agreed to do that?
Um, I haven't spoken to him personally, but it's, it's.
He's on the docket, they're on the docket, right?
Yeah.
They're on the docket.
Okay, but I know Lundey basically did that for us, uh, his own good, I don't think, I don't think we paid him anything to do it, so.
But one thing I wanna be clear on, what's the dollar amount for a fine to start with?
Pinned off what the judge says.
Pardon me?
The judge said.
The judge said it.
The judge was saying the fine.
Did you say fifteen dollars? Did I hear that?
That's what the other one was, fifteen dollars.
I mean, that, that's a joke, fine him.
No, that's a day.
I have no control.
A hundred dollars a month.
It was a day.
I don't care if it's a day.
But we've got some people out there with ten thousand dollars in fines.
We have had, since I've been here, we've had a handful of lien requests and reductions, and the board then has um, reduced the fine down to five hundred dollars. Cause they may have had a um, a fine that may have gone ten years, fifteen years, and um, but you don't, you don't reduce it unless they're brought into compliance. And I think sometimes it's somebody who wants to buy that property who's willing to develop that, that, you know, that type of thing is occurring, just a handful.
That would be a philosophical conversation, because that creates another challenge, and we'll have that conversation another day, I'll give you my thoughts on that later. We'll be here on that.
Alright.
That part of the chart is interesting, yes.
I'm gonna leave you there.
Code enforcement can run, run an update, like weekly update, or a spreadsheet.
Yeah, if you, that would be nice for us to get, you can, I mean, you don't have to present it to the board, but just email it to us.
Yeah, thank you very much for this, appreciate that.
Thank you.
My man is not on there, but.
I'm sorry, I prepared that.
And nice meeting you all, I see your names all the time, I wouldn't know if you'd worked on that.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Lopez, are you familiar with Palmville?
Uh, not so much.
You need to come out and we'll go for a ride.
I mean, I'm sure it passed by it by now, but off the top of my head, it's not exactly.
Alright, um, we're on Department heads, um, Bailey, you got anything?
No.
Ossie, you got anything?
I do not.
I don't think you got anybody else sitting here, um, Connie, did, would you like to say anything? I know we talked to you at the other meeting, but.
Thank you, Chairman, it's a pleasure to be here. Better?
Better.
Okay, alright. Um, just to recap what I reported, the CCPWA, um, this year's legislative session was pretty challenging, um, because of the dynamics between the Speaker, the Senate President, and Governor. Um, the conference process uh didn't start till June third, when actually the legislative session was hosted in um, May, on May second. So we ended up having from a sixty day session to like a hundred and five days. The county did, is in the budget for the wastewater treatment plant expansion and improvement, um, at the three point five million dollar ask, it was a fifty percent ask. We do have a grant that we put into portal last year, you were, that is in the works right now, but this is, when we did the grant back in June, uh, from before, the improvements were not part of that grant application, it was only the extension. So the additional money in this year's budget will help cover the improvement cost. So we, Representative Tuck and her staff, um, got it into the budget on the House side, and then through the conference process, Senator Braw and her staff, and, and they are champions. They really went to that and worked hard to keep this in the budget. So we're in there, I'm extremely grateful, and we just have to wait to see what the governor does. Um, at this point in time, the bill, the budget has not been presented to him. He um, he needs to act by July one, if that works out, because then people can get paid, it's the start of the fiscal year for the state. So one of the things that happened, um, during, in February, they did a couple special set, three special sessions, and it started off with that immigration bill. And then the Speaker of the House, um, decided to go back to the previous year and undo a veto, um, of one of the state's, um, budget items. Runs the legis- the lobbyist registration and some of the other, um, state things, so this kinda started the whole ball rolling of the contention. Ended up going through the session. So, the, and their biggest, they wanted to cut taxes, they wanted to cut property, um, alcohol on taxes, they wanted to reduce the sales tax. So all this conversation through all, you know, in the media and everything, I thought, you know, and then there wasn't any conference process in May. I was really getting nervous that all the number of projects were gonna go away, because, and they were trying to save money for the next speaker and the, the next speaker after that. So they're, because of the economic changes in, on the federal side, with the tariffs and all that, they're, and so they wanted to make sure that they had plenty of money coming down the road for the others, of the, of next Senate President and the next Speaker of the House. So those were a lot of some of the dynamics that we were working with this year, that haven't been, you know, usually they start out with a ten percent reduction in budget as a, as a standard course, but this year was a lot different. Um, there is one thing that is in the tax package that I noticed, and I, I sent it to you. They have language in there that says, it allows the physically constrained counties adjacent to the Gulf of America or the Atlantic Ocean to use tourist development tax revenues for public facilities. That's in, that's in um, seven oh three one. Uh, so I don't really know how that's gonna work, but I think that's a good thing. I, so it's in there, we'll see what happens if the governor signs it. So, uh, I thought that was a, they're always going after revenue sources, so I thought this was a, a positive thing. And I, I don't know how it's gonna end.
So if I can clarify, what you're saying is, since we have, Lee and Charlotte, and they both have touched the Gulf of America, there's somehow, some way, we might be able to take and get some of their tourist development tax and bring it over to us. Remember my conversation about using tourist development tax?
Oh, really? I didn't think of that, man.
So that's why I wanted to clarify, remember my conversation about taking tourist development tax and bringing it from Orlando? Well, this is kind of a, maybe the first precursor to the, that conversation, so.
So I, I was like, whoa, what is this?
Well, we touched on a collision, I do remember it.
But we touched Lee and we touched Charlotte, so those two counties touched, but.
So there's more to come on that. Um, just so you know, we're working out that quarterly reports for all, all the um, D E P grants that we're working with, the vulnerability assessment, um, the US twenty seven utilities corridor project, they're gonna be wrapping that up, I think the final pay request is coming through. We'll be able to um, probably have one more quarterly report, and once we do the final pay request, that should close out, so that'll be finished. Um, the phase six, um, they, they have the bids in, the two new grants, um, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, expansion grant, and then the, about the state's grants, we just did the preliminary paperwork, so that D E P could move forward with coming up with the scope of work, grant work plan and agreement. So that's going on, um, at this point in time. And what I talked about, um, the water quality grant portal, um, should open July one, and um, so the, we've been going after grants many, many years through that program. And the, the two that are remaining is the Countryside Meadows and the Washington Park Phase Two, so um, we'll go after that, and there's another project. The, um, I don't know if the feasibility study, we could go after that if you wanted to do that, I don't know if that would be, you may have to go through, um, the infrastructure department, but I'll have to.
That, that feasibility study that we're talking about isn't the one we talked about, CCPWA, this is the one for the North County, uh, for Buckhead Ridge area. We'll talk about our conversation about Franklin.
Oh, yes, um, so we did do um, a grant application for the fiscal year twenty six through Congressman Typhus' office. And he has sponsored the wastewater treatment plant expansion improvement project too. So we keep asking, so something's gotta show up somewhere. So, so, but their project, we probably won't see anything until the fall, late fall. So um, whether that can be adjusted, cause we went after the um, expansion improvement money. So I don't know if that can be adjusted to that, but it's, it's due sponsors, so we're in there.
So what Connie and I were discussing is, if by chance we got the eight million dollars on the federal side, can we reallocate that money to Washington Park or for the feasibility study? We're not doing anything until we find out if the governor is going to veto any of those projects. So we keep our name in the half on the federal side, so that we have that money if it falls through. But at the end of the day, if we happen to get awarded the other eight million, we've gotta see if we can amend the scope of work for some of these other projects. Good problem to have.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we're gonna wait on contact with Congressman Frank. So, uh, um, there are some other line items in the budget, I talked about the parks grant, they funded, you know, eighteen projects, but didn't put any money for a grant portal app- application. Uh, whether they have any money that hasn't been used, or unencumbered money that they can open the grant portal with for park money, I don't know. At this point, I mean, that remains to be determined. So um, they put, um, a lot of money into what, the members' water projects in the budget, so um, I, like over four hundred million, uh, member projects in a, uh, water quality portal, um, that, that are in the budget. So they did things a little different, they were moving towards everything to a grant program, and now this budget shows where they funded member projects versus, you know, now we got the, you know, details, because they can say they go after a grant, and I don't know, that is, it needs to be seen. So, but we work with the governor's staff, uh, for the projects, making sure that they have additional information that they need to vet when they're doing their meetings. So um, our communication with the, um, with the governor's staff, we've done that, so prayers that the legal members.
Do you know who's in line to be the next president and speaker?
Um, the next speaker is gonna be Sam Harrison, and the next Senate President is Sean from, um, just hit a blank. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
I know who it is. But I.
Nobody local, right?
No, he's on, on my, on the list. And then, um, next week, I'll see you, her, at the Board Association of Counties Conference. And, and the one thing that I did not mention, uh, they have already put out the committee week schedule, and the first committee week is the first week in October. So whatever we're gonna do for next year, we should probably have together by September. I don't, you know, uh, your projects, your delegation packet.
Well, if they're gonna be in committees in the first week in October, when are they gonna have their delegation meeting?
Well, that'll be, we'll see, but I mean, just get ready, I don't know when they're.
You won't even have a budget passed for it.
When's the budget, uh, September, or?
Yeah.
Alright, so, yeah, I just flipped the clock.
We'll talk.
Okay, that's not a problem. Do you have any questions?
It's this week we'll see you.
It is this week, it's tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, yes, that's true. Thank you.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Alright, moving right along, we will move to commissioners, I don't want to have anybody else out there, Mr. Barnes.
I don't have anything, sir.
Patterson.
Um, we've got, um, Fort July barbecue coming up, you know, fifth of July, uh, two weeks, um. There's, um, we were talking the other day on West Avenue, where they just built the new school, said it's on the road, West Avenue, whatever it's called. That turn lane kinda dead ends right there into, into uh, First Banker Close, instead of coming down to West. And with the new school traffic and everything coming in, I wonder how hard it would be to look at getting that turn lane extended onto West, for one. And then the other thing is, those canals running down West are just getting more deteriorated and, and everything else from these armored catfish and all that. I'm wondering, especially with new school coming in, there's no guard rail up on that road or anything else, can some of that canal be filled in to put some guard rail up and strengthen? Or is that something, i- is that the city's, or is that ours, or is that?
That is, that is in the city line. Uh, that ditch, I mean, we go in there clean it once in a while, but that ditch is a, is in the city line.
See, and I, I was under the impression that the middle of the road was the city line.
It's on the other side of the canal.
Okay.
But the turn lane, I tried to get them to do that turn lane when they did twenty seven.
Yes.
When they did the parking lot at, at uh, the Doyle Clodger Building and everything, changed all that, and DOT typical, no, no, no. But with the new school, as you stated, we might have a better opportunity in Alkaze no longer, I understand, with DOT. We might have a better opportunity to revisit that.
Yes.
I was talking with Rosemary today about that, she came by my office, and I said the same thing to her, I said, bring it back up at the CTS key meeting, bring it back up to DOT, and so on communication, and say, hey, it's gonna be a problem, bus is turning into that.
Yeah.
So it gives us, it gives us another conversation, the school is already trying to get, the reason I'm waiting is the school is trying to get that intersection designated as a dangerous intersection. So we can partner with them, with their proposal, and join forces, and collaborate with DOT, and go out from a two different approach, if that makes sense.
Right. And then the other thing I had was, uh, had a lady out there in Lakeport, her, her house fell on the way in tornadoes after the hurricane. She had a, a shipload on there, and she had been told that FEMA would cover her shipload.
I don't know if she's been told that, but um, that's one of our items we're working on.
Okay. Steve, did you wanna say something?
I just wanted to say that. So I'm, I'm working on school, Steve Dogg, uh, tends to do six way. Um, and so what the school's gonna do is they're gonna put guard rails in front of their entrances. They've already had one of the, uh, construction guys drive off in that canal. But in front of those entrances for fifty, seventy, five hundred feet or something like that, they're gonna put some guard rails up on that river.
Yeah, a little down there, I've seen a car in there more than once.
Hey, uh, Mr. Taylor?
I don't have anything to say.
Mr. South? Don't think, any word on the playground equipment for Washington Park in Palmville? Have you heard anything at all?
Yes, the, the agreements have all been signed and executed. I know Bailey had sent them the addresses, so it should be forthcoming, so.
Okay.
There's about a five, six weekly time, once they get their purpose order to.
Alright.
Bring them in, so.
That's it.
Agreements are done.
Thank you.
COs are done for you, yeah.
I don't have a whole lot, but, um.
Today is, I think today.
So we did have a meeting with the Regional Planning Council for Southwest Florida, didn't it? Uh, they're gonna be like in Limbo for a year deciding on whether they're gonna stay open or not, so I don't know what's gonna happen there. Um, our HRTPO meeting, we're still pushing hard to get Highway seventy four laying across, but, um, it was an interest, I don't know if it was there or the system's traffic thing. But they showed the only place on Highway seventy eight that was basically maxed out. They have numbers that so many cars have to be on, and that's what maxes it out. And it was from Linda Road to the Casamara Bridge was the only place on seventy eight that was congested. And I'm like, how can you pick a block out of that whole road? The people have to come from one way or the other. That whole street should have been on there. I guess they were flying out of the moon and falling on the bridge and coming in. But anyway, it was kinda interesting that they did that. Um, I think there might be some kind of benefit for, to the guy at Powers?
Yes, that's, that's this weekend, actually, yes.
At the Legals?
Chatty Goings.
So, um, I know we're going to conference this week. Hopefully we can have a good, interesting meeting up there. I know they have one class on there on how to handle rally people in here. To kill, and I think that's for Okahto. But, uh, I might attend that this evening.
Okahto?
But, uh, other than that, I don't have anything else, I don't think. Um. Alright, if our business is done, we are adjourned, uh, seven eleven.